One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting of December tenth, two thousand twelve, with that we'll call.
Clear.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Semansky.
Here.
Comrose.
Here.
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 Okay, minutes of the November twelfth meeting are in your packet. Additions, corrections?
I have one modification I've already informed the clerk of. On page five, under section D, the item where it says, "Come, let us will install additional series of lightning arresters." We need to add on the overhead power lines leading to the no four or well forces.
You've advised your that. With those corrections, we need a motion to approve.
So, second.
Okay, motion is second. Discussion? Your call?
Clear.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Semansky.
Yes.
Comrose.
Yes.
Woolman.
Yes.
Whaley.
Yes.
Okay, you'll like to clerk's report?
Total tax income received since last meeting, one hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. Twenty thirteen dog tags are now available at the village hall for sale. Tags are ten dollars each until March fifteenth, twenty thirteen, and after that, dog tags will be raised to fifteen dollars each. And also, for the upcoming election on April ninth, the current, the correct filing dates now for the municipal election are from December seventeenth through the twenty-sixth. The village hall will be closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the holiday. And the last day for filing forms is now Wednesday, December twenty-sixth. We'll be open till five o'clock for accepting those forms. Other than that, forms can be filed at the village hall Monday through Friday between the hours of eight and four thirty P.M. That's all I have.
Any questions as a clerk? At this time, we'll have recognizable audience, anyone who wish to address the board by state of name and concern. We're gonna, we're gonna get to her.
Okay.
Anyone else? If none, we're gonna do our permissions and then we'll go to that beautification commission. I'll just report on that briefly. Very successful house walk. Those who attended, I believe they can attest to it. Definitely, the people that were at it were very enthused about it. And there's a lot of people that are interested in being at it next year, which is gonna be the beautification commission's probably the last year to do it. So, not saying that they won't assist, but, but like you said, they're getting kinda tuckered out. Uh, questions? Fourth of July? Hailers?
Nothing to report since last, last meeting.
Youth commission?
We recently did the float and the light parade. Want to think the chamber, it was an excellent event. On December sixteenth, which is a Sunday, we're doing a trip to see the zoo lights down at Lincoln Park Zoo. Registration forms went home with the children. They're also available at the village hall. And then, we also have, on Martin Luther King Day again this year, we're gonna have open bowling on January twenty-first for the kids to come and bowl all day. And that's it.
Any other commission report? No, I guess there is no more. With that, we'll go to our committees. Planning, building, and zoning. Yale?
Considering an ordinance approving the areas for front yard fence at two eighty-one or two going. After due notice, a public hearing with PCC, the minutes, this league recommending various be granted with two conditions, that the wrought iron look of the fence get provided, is provided in the photos be used, and that the public walk on the vacant lot purchased to the north be installed within six months of the public walk being installed on the lot to the north. The attorney has drafted the ordinance and by new backs. I'm gonna, uh, please, any audience again, or?
No, no comments from anything to hear, other than the petitioner being there, and she's agreed to these conditions, so.
Anybody have any question?
I have a few.
Okay.
One, was the building permit requested for the fence? A block structure that's existing on that sidewalk?
No.
So, we're not sure about the foundation that's underneath both blocks next to the sidewalk?
That is correct.
The second issue is, it's a requirement for a variance, and it's the require, the request for dictating what hardship exists that is not self-imposed, that necessitates you requesting this variance, such as handicap member of a household, undersized lot, or condition of a neighboring property. My concern is it states that we purchase a lot, we are purchasing lots in the north. To me, that's a self-imposed hardship, and I don't see it as being a hardship. So, what is the other hardship for why we're doing this? Why is this variance being approved?
Because it's our parent property. The question is, if she didn't have it there, if I'm gonna ask you, would you approve? I'll let the petitioner answer these questions. I don't know.
I, I'm having trouble hearing what's going on, so.
Well, I'm, one, the, the concern I have with the fence being built so close to the sidewalk, it's twofold. One, with the blocks being constructed there without a foundation, that's the building, that's the idea of a building permit. It allows us to verify that the foundation is designed correctly to sustain the movement of the soil so that it doesn't result in failure of the structure. So, which would mean someone walking by, blocks fall, they get injured. Since it's a public sidewalk, the village is responsible for that. The other item that I'm concerned about is, if someone comes to the village for a variance, the idea of the variance is that you can't live within the constraints of the rules that the village has imposed on everybody building anything in the village. So, if there's, if there's something that's out of your control, which is known as a hardship, it would be a, a, a not self-imposed hardship. But the question I have is, what is the non-self-imposed hardship? And the, the response that you had provided was, we are purchasing a lot to the north. That's not a hardship, and if it is, it's a self-imposed hardship because you're purchasing it yourself. Be different if there was a reason why you're doing this, and that's what I'm trying to understand. Why are we approving this variance? And it's one of the requirements of the variance request, and that's what I'm trying to understand.
Unfortunately, the, we didn't get a building permit. Weren't aware that we needed a building permit for that. We thought we were developing our backyard, okay, as part of our landscaping. And we got to that point and found out, we had it all up, okay? And all we were, needed to do was put the fencing in between the pillars, okay? It, it existed already before we had the, before we had a permit. So, and the fact that we bought the lot to the north had really nothing to do with it, other than we bought the lot to the north. So, we weren't, you know, I mean, it, it didn't concern that potential neighbor. But there was no hardship, other than the fact that it's already there.
I guess, is it, who is, who installed the, the block?
The landscaper.
And the landscaper didn't know to pull a building permit when he constructs anything inside the village?
Well, we had a, we had a, he had a license, okay? Obviously, he didn't know that we needed a permit for that. We didn't know it. So, no, it just wasn't something that was addressed. And like I said, we had it, we had it up before we realized, before we found out, quite by accident, that we should've gotten a permit for it. So, I mean, we didn't really think we were putting a fence up as such. It was more of a decoration than a fence. It's open on both ends. It doesn't obstruct anybody's visibility. And so, it was just decorative.
That was the only question I had.
Anyone else?
Is, is there a footing underneath this?
Is there a what?
A footing? Is there a concrete?
There is something under it, yes. Yes, there is.
Anybody else? Any questions?
I, I hope Janet, you understand, once this variance is granted, which I'm probably sure it will, but that's, that's the, the standard for anybody else, because then they can do the same thing, and that, that's the unfortunate thing. Pretty soon, we're gonna have fences all over, because people are gonna say, hey, you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand the whole thing, and I'm not, I have no objection to what you're doing, because I've seen areas where, you know, while it looks nice to us and it's our taste, it might not be somebody else's. Somebody else could put a wooden fence up there, and, you know, so I understand the whole thing. Like I said, unfortunately, and I would've done things differently on that frontage if I really had known. We didn't think we were putting a fence up. We, you know, actually, that is the only part that is not there. The whole thing should probably not have been done that way, but, but it's done, but it's done, okay?
Mistakes were done on both parts.
Now, now, now we just need, would like to finish it off. I mean, if we can't, we can't, you know? But it, the whole thing is unfortunate.
Maybe that's a hardship you want, Brian, I don't know.
Of course, you can't be self-imposed, sorry.
If, if I remember right, and granted, I, I think what she's trying to say is, this is more of an ornament than it is a fence, which I tend to agree, but in the fences that we have to prove on the corner lots, the only difference would be, if I remember right, and one of you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it farther in? So, in other words, we wouldn't let it go out into the sidewalk. We'd be more like halfway between the house and that sidewalk and that side.
Yes, it's, it's supposed to be in line with the, the building.
The, the side lot only allows your fence to be in line with your building. The variance that it, that was done in Prairie Crossing is it was, it was halfway to allow for, for, to not obstruct view. And with it, it'd be different if it was all totally open, but since you have those block structures, you can't really say that unless you can see through block, it's not totally viewable. That's the other thing that to be concerned about.
What I wanted to say was that we didn't go to the south of our driveway, which is technically our front, okay? We, we went to the north of the driveway, which is, like I said, we thought it was our backyard. So, it's not obstructing the corner view at all.
I can't recollect, no, I don't buy it many times, yeah.
And, and it's open on, on both ends, wide open, so.
Yeah, you got it in the back of your, your side yard, if you may say.
It only went up in a couple of days, is that correct?
Pardon?
Only went up in a couple of days.
Yeah.
It went by one day and wasn't.
All of, I, everything we did went up in the summer, okay? I mean, we, it was part of our landscaping, which was done in a couple of weeks, really. And yeah, had we not been out of town before, and we were out of town for a week or so, and ended up putting a sprinkler system in, which, again, we weren't aware that we needed a, that's how this all started, because we just put the sprinkler system in. We had a sprinkler system at our other house that we never had a permit for, but obviously, it was put in before permits were required. Plus, we didn't have a permit, we didn't have a sprinkler system in the parkway, which we do on this one. But, you know, like I said, that, that actually held the whole thing up, putting that sprinkler system in. Otherwise, it had all been in, in, in a week. I mean, you know, I mean, they were working every day, you know? So, I don't know.
I guess one other question. Did you guys have?
No, no, I'm just.
Is your, is your plan to extend this to the north?
No, it isn't. We bought that lot to the north. We really don't have any plans for it. More than likely, we'll incorporate it in our backyard. It isn't something that we've given a lot of thought to just yet. We're kind of settling in, you know, and come spring, when the weather changes and we get outside, and we know we wanna work that ground up and level it off and do something with it. We don't know what we wanna do, but it was not our intention to extend that. I mean, it, it was just something that wasn't thought of to start with, so.
She, she couldn't anyway, Brian, because it's a twenty-five foot, right, a be dressed?
I was gonna say, there's, there's utility easement back there, if I'm not mistaken, so you have to.
There is, there is, and we're aware of that.
Before you do anything.
Yeah, we know, we know.
Okay.
So, like I said, that, that's future, and it has nothing to do with what we're doing today, so.
Okay.
And just to clarify, right, this question, the attorney and the planner both defined it as a defense. By definition of our ordinance, it defines it as a, they both defined it as a defense, that they were emailing pictures.
By rights, even though any ornamental, ornamental is considered offense. Okay, let's see, your pleasure here.
Anybody else have any question?
I'll make the motion to approve the variance.
I'll, I'll second.
Ordinance number eleven seventy-two. Motion that made and seconded to approve the variance. Any discussion? None, roll call?
Whaley?
Yes.
Woolman?
Yes.
Comrose?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric?
Next thing.
Clear?
No.
Okay, now, set. Continue on.
You emailed your copy of your ordinance.
Thank you.
And we will report it back.
We probably won't be doing anything till spring. We needed to, you know, the weather will be bad, and we're gonna be out of town, so. Okay, thank you.
Considering an ordinance amending the feature zoning ordinance pertaining to a special use permit for LED signs, the PCC has met twice since the joint meeting with village board, and has now recommended an ordinance by the vote of five to two, an amendment to special use provisions for an LED or digital sign. These technical requirements are detailed in the close ordinance and will be explained further at the meeting. The two no votes pertaining to the removal of provisions which require that digital signs only be allowed for monument signs. The two no votes desire to permit any type of improvements to the pole signs which could extend the life of a non-performing use. This process was begun over a year ago, when DeYoung requested a special use permit for the digital sign, and the village board directed the PCC to draft additional criteria and conditions for such permits. There has been a lack of unanimous agreement on this subject ever since the issue referred to PCC, and this is probably due to non-critical such established a digital sign special use permit when the issue was last addressed in two thousand and nine. The village was just going to look into each, each request on a case-by-case basis. This ordinance is also close to the middle ground as to if we are going to achieve the criteria as to, but it will never be perfectly eyes of both the PCC or trustees. How do you wanna?
If that was ever so true, it is. I don't know if we would ever get a unanimous recommendation out of the PCC on this one. I don't know if we'll get six votes in favor of this ordinance, because it's, everyone's got a different twist on this. It's the best shot. I know Brian questioned me on number ten with this aesthetic thing, and again, the attorney weighed in. I think everyone agreed they'd love to see it in there. I'd like to see it in there. Attorney said, no way. We're not putting that in the ordinance, because aesthetics cannot be defined, cannot be measured. And I'm not putting something in an ordinance that doesn't have some kind of definitive explanation. It's subjective. I said, the whole zoning ordinance is subjective, really, if you have people vote on it, and vote their personal views. But he is the one who didn't allow us to put it in the ordinance. So, I'm just describe, I do the best I can, and this is what we got. And I think this is why we probably, the first time we did the LED signs as a special use, we didn't put any conditions in there, because we couldn't agree on it. That'd be my guess. But this is the best we could do. We got a five to two vote out of the PCC on it. It's up to you guys to decide. You can kick it back to them. You know, you're just not gonna make everybody happy with this. Go ahead, Brian.
My, my concern is that we've, we're not addressing one key issue, which is flooding Route One with signs. Density is not dictated in here at all.
It was discussed, and the PCC, even correcting my wrong, there's two members here tonight, stated that they didn't wanna have, say, so many, so many hundreds of feet, because if they did that, it would discriminate against someone who didn't jump the gun and apply for an LED sign. We wanna do it on case-by-case basis, but they did agree to say one per zoning lot.
But it, it goes back to the point of, if you're not gonna put aesthetics in there, you want something that's measurable. This kind of gets into that measurable thing. You want something measurable. The only way you can get something measurable, which aesthetics does not do, is to dictate density. And if you're not dictating density, you're saying you're fine with aesthetics with them just being up and down the road.
I think, at, at least the meeting where I was, I think they agreed with density. The problem is, is who gets it first? And we, we didn't have an answer, at least I don't think there was an answer as far as, like, I, I had thought of that particular night saying that, well, it's first come, first served. Well, that wasn't very pleasing to the board, and I'm not saying that's the right answer either. I think that's, that's, that's the hang-up of density, is how did they decide who gets it when? And the only answer that I could come up with, or the only suggestion that at the meeting I was at, was first come, first served. And I think that's what's rubbing them wrong. And am I correct with that basically?
Right, I think, I think it was finally the consensus, if there was such a thing, I think the consensus that, that the idea of you're there first, and therefore, you, you lock out everybody around you perhaps forever, just didn't seem how.
Didn't seem right, didn't seem.
And again, all that, that comes down to how you specify the density. I mean, if, if density is not specified, then that's, that's what happens. You, you create a, if you're first, you're first. If we have a density dictated, the density tells us what's happening. And if a guy has it on one corner of his lot, and the guy south of him or to the north, or wherever it is, is totally a full lot away, puts it on the other end of his, he may be within that density allotment. But there's no dictation of density at all, so even if someone does come and say, I wanna do this, and I'm in full allowance of the zoning to do this, then we will have the Vegas stretch. That's what worries me. And the only way to control it is either aesthetics, and if you're not gonna use aesthetics, then you need to have something measurable. It becomes density, and we need to define what that density is.
They, I think they use an example of Tubby's. What if they wanted to come in and do an LED sign? The ordinance would say they could, because DeYoung's is there. That was an example they used, if I remember.
It all depends on the density that's dictated by the, by, by the ordinance that we pass. If the, if, if the density that's allotted in the ordinance is so many feet apart, it would be based on so many feet apart. Right now, there isn't, so you can have one literally, you got DeYoung's in right in front of their business, and Tubby's can put theirs within, right on that edge of the property line. Now, that density is just, it looks like garbage. But if you give them a distance, it can be on the south side of their property and still be within the, in the density that the PCC has established. But right now, no density's been established. And at that meeting, the comment that came up was, well, what would, what would it be if somebody has theirs and somebody else wants to get them? Unless you dictate the density, of course, the comment's gonna be, well, then the guy's out. But someone's gotta dictate what that density is that we wanna see. There's no right or wrong answer here. You're right. It's a matter of opinion. You guys can decide.
I got a question. Since this was, goes back to two thousand and nine, and you guys have been addressing this on a case-by-case basis, how many of these have you looked at since two thousand and nine? Was DeYoung's the first and the only since two thousand and nine? Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I'd make a comment. I would certainly help with the committee. I'm looking at this, and I don't think I'm applying to the ordinance to certain property. I think that's part of our job, that, I think that's a security, because we've got a lot of things to take in consideration when they come in for that stuff. I certainly, I would certainly think one of those, in my mind, would be, you're not putting a top on another.
The problem you're gonna have, George, is if someone petitions to do that, and I, I looked at all that documentation that BOP had provided us on just numerous regulations concerning signage, if someone wants to challenge the, the village's code concerning LED signs, there's no room in there that states density is a factor we're allowed to use. So, if we say, well, no, you can't have it that close, they could bring us to court when, because there's nothing dictated in our, in our zoning ordinances that states density is an item we're gonna use as one of those requirements, and what that density is. And I'm just trying to make sure that we wrap this up where we don't have any loose strings that we didn't think about. That's what I'm concerned about.
During the public hearing, did anything ever come up about density? Or any, any other comment?
There was no public comment.
There was no public comment?
No, it was, there were, there were two different finding and zoning meetings that this came up at. The one where we were, the, the board was invited, it was kind of like a workshop for the PCC, and then the following meeting was when they were going through.
It was discussed, but like I say, I think the hang-up was, was that how do you decide to find who, who gets what when, the density, and how do you find it?
But there was no one in the public hearing.
Is this something that maybe the planning commission oughta take up and maybe just refer back to the planning commission? See if they can come up with some of their scenario?
I'm just, again, the, the concern that the board had when we were at that workshop was, if you're not gonna go with aesthetics, you need something that's measurable.
Wasn't addressed, really.
It's density. So, so we're looking at distance between number of feet. Which would be the density, and it would be also what's across the street from you. If someone's got a sign across the street from you, that distance is totally affecting you also.
Question. I should be answering questions, not answering questions.
Okay, answer the question.
If the PCC can't agree on the distance, and they come back and they say, the proximity of, of, prior special uses for LED, LED signs shall be a determining factor as to whether or not the variant shall be granted. Is that sufficient as opposed to an exact number of feet?
Say that again?
The proximity of existing digital signs shall be a criteria for consideration by the granting of.
Yeah, a lawyer would love to see that, because they'll go and have it overlooked. You, you need to state a number. I mean, I hate to do that, but if you wanna strengthen our ordinance, you need to state a number. Otherwise, you oughta just void this entire ordinance, because any lawyer can come in and rip us over.
And I know where you're going with this, Brian, and I even stated at the PCC meeting that it wouldn't matter to me if they just prohibited these signs.
That would be your best way.
I mean, to me, just.
Don't have them. You don't have a problem then.
There's a business, there's a business advantage to having them. But what you're gonna do is take a compass around the DeYoung's sign, draw a five-hundred-foot circle around it, and say, he has proprietary rights in that five-hundred-foot circle. And that's, that's hard, that was hard for the PCC to swallow. We did discuss that. You know, you're telling everyone in five hundred feet of his business, including possibly the hardware store, they can't have them. And, and, and from a business point of view, a private enterprise point of view, that's tough, it'll respond.
Very prohibitive.
Just because you have the money now to do it, you can write, you can draw your five-hundred-foot circle around, adjoining business properties. I think that is, was the concern. Is that correct?
You could also lose businesses.
Businesses that could wanna come here.
If, if that's the case, then except having, allowing these seems to be side by side down Route One, which is one of the biggest concerns this board had when I first got on, which is, we wanna make sure we don't have Las Vegas. Now, granted, DeYoung's is the first. It's only the start. It's only the start.
I'd argue your side too, Brian. I'm just saying, what, what PCC did discuss it, and that, that was their concern.
I don't think sending it back is gonna, I think it's already been discussed. I don't think there's a solution. And there's a reason why they didn't put density in here, is because of what we're talking about. I don't think sending it back is gonna change anything.
Okay, so what are you saying? That Tubby comes in, wants to put up an LED, you're gonna allow him that? And, and, and again, this is what you were trying to avoid, you know?
I, I think.
Well, it sounds anyhow. I, I wasn't at the workshop, but.
I mean, we could send this back and forth all along. My point, my point is, is that they've already discussed it. They've already read the recommendation, sending it back. I don't think it's going to.
Can I, I can candid, again, if you pick a distance and throw an ordinance now as an amendment to pass it, you're done with it, you're not going to upset them as much as if you referred back to them. But, because you're bouncing it like a ping pong ball back and forth.
That's my point. What's your, what's your?
Where do we come up with the number?
Yeah, where you gonna come up with a number?
What, what kind of number are you gonna come up with? Twenty-five feet?
But I, I, you know, I agree with what you said. I mean, I would have a concern. I mean, if, you know, DeYoung's has theirs, and, I mean, just say that, that Arrelios was vacant. Or, I mean, especially as we look to, to growth to the south with the Iliana. I mean, as, as businesses come up here, I mean, this could be, we could be just chewing them right away. I, I mean, it, I, I understand the, the need to not wanna make it look like Las Vegas, but that's why I asked the question. I mean, since two thousand and nine, we're talking three, almost four years, how many times have we had to address this on a case-by-case basis? And the answer was one. We've had one sign, we've had one person come in here in the last four years. I don't see a, a ration of fifty LED signs wanting to be put up and down Route One to make it look like Las Vegas.
But now, but now's the time to do it. Not when you got.
Not when you've got two signs or three signs out there. With only one sign, now you can set a footage. If you've got two of them a hundred feet apart, you're done.
And when, when a, a good solid business that's been here for years, say L, uh, L and H, where they want to put it up, we just say, well, sorry. There's one across the street at Walt's, there's one at the corner by the other shopping plaza. You're within those, that footage, you don't get one.
So I didn't interpret that way. Any existing sign would still be eligible for that, I didn't think density would, that's, okay, well then, we would, should make that exception for exactly what you just said. Hey, you know, we, we were trying to get the point across that any existing sign, they want to replace it with a sign, they should be able to. Density issue to me would be any new sign. I didn't think it should.
See, I, I don't think that's what Brian was looking for.
I, I know that, but here's, I, but I think, I don't think any of us are on the same page. So I don't think we're going to agree to resolve this tonight.
We had the same problem with the PZC.
So possibly, maybe we should table this.
I'll make the recommendation.
Table? Okay. We currently have a special use requirement in the ordinance now, there's just no criteria for it. Do you know what I mean? They come in and you just vote your conscience because there's no guiding principles as to what you can do for that sign. And I know we discussed this back in oh eight or oh nine, it's because we had difficulty coming up with it.
But remember, in oh eight, oh nine, we did not have anybody requesting an LED sign. No. At the time, we were going over the sign ordinance, and we stated, you know, there's a gaping hole in here with all these LED signs that are going up. We ought to be ahead of the curve.
And put it special uses.
Now, right now, as John's indicated, well, you, you, you only had one since two thousand and nine. Yeah, in two thousand and nine, we were ahead of that petition requesting, saying we ought to start thinking down this path. So if you look at that, within three years, someone has already gone down that street.
I know one community, which I won't mention, it's a limited use, and maybe had six conversions in the last three years. So the, the, by the fact that we have a special use requirement, makes them think twice before they do something. But you want to table it to the next meeting?
You know, and, and you could table it, but it's got to be discussed by this board. Maybe you should have a workshop on it, you know, and that's the only issue you talk about. Because you can sit here all night long, and we're going to have a difference of opinions. I think you're going to have to come together, and you're all going to have to give and take and, and agree. Are you going to get it perfect? No, never going to get it perfect. I don't care how you write it, you're never going to get it perfect. But I think you've got to have a consensus on it, and it sounds like we don't have it. You didn't have it on the, on the planning commission, and I don't think you probably have it in this board. So I think that this is appropriate workshop.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to include that we need to, as a board, have a workshop to discuss it.
Just the six of you have the PZC.
That's a motion. We have a second on, a second on table on that, and having a workshop, and you set the date for the workshop. A motion and a second to table it, and refer to the workshop. Any discussion, comments, we'll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Somebody else?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Building Department monthly report and the coenforcement monthly report were also included for your review. That is my report.
Okay. We'll go to our committees of finance.
Uh, treasurer's report, Nelson is not in, his treasurer's report is included. If there's any comments, Bob, who's going to give, he would step forward. Did you want to get in front like Nelson does, Bob?
No. He does a good job. I, there's, I saw nothing in here that was peculiar. We did do our November transfers, so we moved a lot of money. We always move all of our money in six months to the fiscal. All those transfers were authorized by the budget process.
Now, where do you track the transfers from?
Let's see, we, uh. They occurred around. Does he, he.
I don't think he watches the transfers, I think it's what's happening inside the areas because he's not writing a check.
That is correct. But I, I think we should duly report that we transferred money into the water main replacement account for months of water main. Uh, we, we transferred some money from refuse to general to pay for our annual brush pickup, and leaf pickup. We transferred money into capital equipment funding fund for the year. All those transfers were done as approved in the budget.
The auditor too, right?
The water was done to the debt fund?
Yeah. Yeah.
But we do them all at once, when the auditor wants to know what happened. They're all done on the same day, same transaction, it's easier. But I see in his report, he's only showing you the checks he cut.
Yeah.
Is that wanting to not leave the bill, which is one of the fun?
He's, he shows us his bills and things.
And it'll be reflected on next month's various reports.
Yeah, yeah.
But I want to make you aware that those were done.
Any other questions for Bob?
Yeah, I've got a question. Ace Hardware in Stager, miscellaneous public work supplies. Why are we going to Stager?
Oh, we haven't gone there around in a long time. It's just a vendor that, that we list, but there were no expenses to that vendor. I don't remember the expenses to that vendor for probably two or three years, but it just ends up staying on the list.
I thought they got something, this year did he want special? I, I can't remember, I thought one time.
Yeah. They did go to Creedase, Ron. They had to deal with Creedase. But I don't remember any of the statements.
Any other questions? I make a, a motion approving the treasurer's report and the fiscal activity for the month of November.
Second.
Motion and seconded, no deal. Discussion? If none, we'll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Various reports for October also included for our review.
Can I comment on that real quick, with Brian? I, I don't know if you look at it, but your state income tax, you notice we're way ahead of what we anticipated, what we budgeted. We're catching up from last year. I don't know, there was three months, I believe, last year that we didn't, and I think they, they caught up with it. And one other thing, I think, maintenance supplies, water system, Bob, I, I see he's kind of beaten into that. I hope he's going to keep a handle on that. Because we've only got nine thousand dollars left yet, so I hope he understands that.
We discussed that already.
Okay.
You and I.
Yeah, we did, but I didn't see the numbers at that time. Now I see the numbers.
I, I know.
Okay. All right.
He actually has more money left in streets than he basically wants.
All right, sorry, Brian.
Um, the bills for the month of November also included as far as review. Bob, did you add some from the email that you had sent us, anything major about? Although these are a lot higher than.
No, I, I do want to, yeah, they're, they're higher because we're paying our annual comprehensive liability coverage for the year. I believe there's a bond payment, which we typically run on Nelson's report and not the accounts payable. But it's easier for auditors if we include those in our accounts payable. So the bond payments in here, and there was a third big one.
Fifteen grand for.
Lift station.
Lift station.
Yes. Lift station upgrade is also in here. That bill comes, goes back on July, but they just got around to doing this now.
There was three big ones in there, Brian. One being there.
Lot higher than we had the last month.
What's that?
Lot higher than we had the last month.
Yeah.
Well, last month was high too, because maybe EPA came in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One twelve.
But I want to get back to Ron's question he asked about Stager Ace. Ron, this, these lists of bills list every, all our vendors that we've done business with in the past. Only, you're only paying the bill for what's all, all the way over to the right.
Oh.
If there's an amount there. And as far as hardware, there were two hardware store bills, one to Creedase and one to Feature Ace. And I don't know if they go to Creedase, if Feature Ace doesn't have it, I'm not really sure. But that's a question you should ask the superintendent.
Yeah.
Police Department doesn't buy anything at Creedase, let's just.
Feature do it best.
What did I say?
Feature Ace?
Yes, sorry.
No, I just wanted to.
Do it best. Feature Hardware. And you'll have to ask one of you that question, Ron, because Paul had the same one, he generally looked at the bills.
No, I ain't.
Anything else? Make a motion approving the bills in the value of one hundred eighty-five thousand, twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? Yep? None, we'll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Clear?
Yes. Uh, the five-year plan was distributed prior to the meeting, and was released for our review. Um, we will be using that to set up our budget for the following year. Um, anything you want to add to that, Bob?
No, I'd like to have a vote on that resolution in January, but since you've just received it, happy holidays and happy grieving. I will tell you that Paul and I spent a lot of time discussing spreadsheet numbers, and I'm pretty confident that what you're seeing is a pretty accurate version. Um, but we, we can discuss it at the January meeting if there's any questions or comments, and then we can hold on to the resolution so I can have it. Put up on our webpage and get our GASP requirement taken care of, because this is now going to be a new GASP requirement for auditors. If you have a five-year plan.
When did that come out?
This thing come. I think it goes into effect in the next fiscal year, after one year of the audit. It's coming.
The most municipalities use a five-year plan? We've been doing it for a long time.
Yeah, quite some time, yeah. More and more communities are doing it though.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we weren't doing this, we might not have, uh, people were shaped as in oh seven, we saw the numbers slide, heard the reaction. So I, I swear by this process. I know it's boring for you guys looking at those big spreadsheets, but I studied them quite a bit.
Uh, the next item on our list is scheduled for develop a draft budget for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. I have to look and see how those we can work, Bob. Are those going to work for you, Paul?
Yeah.
Day second?
Yeah.
March second?
Yeah.
I'll look and see if it looks.
Make sure that's the two thousand thirteen, March second, because I, I might be looking at the wrong calendar when I set these days. Should I have brought that to my attention?
That might be wrong, huh?
Um, the plan is for our workshop to be March twenty-sixth. The president, the, myself, and administrator will meet on March second to go over it. If you think we need more time, we'll take the following Saturday, but I don't think it's going to be. And we look to have a target of the budget provided to us by March second, or February twenty-second, does that make sense, Bob? We got to first have our meeting before we get there.
No, that's for my target.
Oh, for us, okay.
Yes, for you guys. Oh, you're right in the basketball season, let's see what happens.
It is, right.
You know what to see? The fact that we got this five-year plan down to a science now makes the process so much easier, because we have most of the work done.
We used to, used to spend a lot of time, I think some of the board members wouldn't attest to that. We spent a lot of time on budget, man, we started six-thirty and lined up at eleven.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll let you know on that, the workshop, Ron. Consider a motion moving the time for the regular village board meeting, March, from March twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, from seven PM to six PM for the purpose of holding a budget workshop.
It should be the twenty-fifth, not the wrong year. Should I have caught that? It should be twenty-fifth.
Oh, the other ones, then the other ones are wrong too, then, Bob.
It's possible. You get the drift, though.
Any other things you have to worry about on that, Bob?
No, but if you need a motion.
Need a motion on that, yeah.
I guess the first question, where are we going to have that? Here?
Right here.
Okay. I make a motion moving the time for the regular village board meeting on March twenty-fifth, from seven PM to six PM for the purpose of holding a, um, budget workshop.
Second.
Discussion, are questions? None, we'll call. Well.
Just one comment. I plan on any candidate running for office, I will write them a copy, I want you to invite them to that.
None, we'll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Eric? Yes. Semansky?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Uh, Title Six, we don't have Title Six, Bob.
No, the attorney's, uh, I think you saw the email? I think it was the one that caused that not to occur today, so I will have it as soon as I have it.
Uh, we also have the proposal from Smith, Colling, Dykstra, and Ohm, which is our village auditor. They've provided us a proposal for, for the three-year fees, two thousand thirteen at eighteen thousand, two thousand fourteen at eighteen thousand five hundred, and two thousand fifteen at nineteen thousand. Any issues on the proposal?
We've, I think the audit has done good for us. Done a lot of very good. We have a new auditor, I mean, same company, but with a new person doing it, so it's going to be like we invented the wheel again. Although this individual did sit and work in both of these years, so hopefully the learning curve won't be extremely bad.
First years of this program was a learning curve for them and a learning curve for us.
Right.
And it took some time, but it has become pretty much.
How long was our current one with them? Is it five years?
Yeah, I think so.
We did two ones, and we did one, one, just to test them out.
Yeah.
And then we did another one, and then a three, so it's been five, five, since Pete's given.
Yeah, no, yeah.
So.
So need a motion on that, then.
I make a motion approving the proposal from Smith, Colling, Dykstra, and Ohm to complete the village audit for the period of two thousand, uh, for a three-year period. The fees of eighteen thousand, or two thousand thirteen, eighteen thousand five hundred for two thousand fourteen, and nineteen thousand for two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion, let's do this again. Discussion, comments, we'll call.
Whaley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Semansky?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes. Comcast has notified us that they will be increasing their rates as of January first, two thousand thirteen, and their letter to the village is enclosed. We also have received the initial estimates for the health care insurance premiums for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year. Anything you want to add to this, Bob?
No, they, the reason why we're getting our rates so early is because they're trying to build a rate structure around a new federal government health plan. And they're, they've determined that it's going to be a about a three percent premium increase attributable to the requirements of that. That being said, uh, if our rate increase is only five, we're doing really well. But that's where we are right now. We won't get our final rates till February, but that's promised. We'll also look at making some changes to the plan and maybe renew our staff.
And then we're in court.
Okay. Streets and alleys?
The leaf collection.
Public safety.
Public safety.
Oh, I'm sorry, public safety.
I thought maybe you were.
I wanted to get done. Public safety, I'm sorry, I wanted to get done early.
Just because I wasn't ready yet. All right, it's all yours.
Uh, police department monthly report for November is in full review. Uh, fire district donates a, uh, is that a ninety-six or a ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine.
Okay. Uh, ninety-nine suburban to police department chief will provide an update. Chief?
We're, uh, looking at a couple, a couple different options on what we're going to do with this vehicle. It's, uh, it's, it's in extremely excellent condition, aesthetically, mechanically. And it's in better condition than its lower miles and that, the cars on our fleet. So being that it is a truck chassis, we're looking at it's either going to have to be used, either go to Emerson or myself as a command vehicle. We're still kind of looking at the options. To paint it, we're getting estimates right now to see that everything painted, instead of having it red colored there. And that's it. Don't have a title for it yet. We do need to replace the radio, we can keep a lot of the equipment that they donated along with this suburban. And that's it, don't have a title for it yet, we do need to replace the radio, we could keep a lot of the equipment that they donated along with this suburban. So. That's what we're doing.
Chief, any other comments?
No, we have a question from the mayor.
I know.
What's gonna happen with the car? Yes, I do plan on eliminating one of the cars, it will be.
Say that loud so that it's on the camera.
Okay, any questions, the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
One quick comment, chief, are, are you contemplating putting plow on there or not?
If you want me to.
Well, no, I, I, there was discussion.
If you want.
Well, like that, you know, it'd help our public works, you know.
We are gonna be down eventually.
Huh?
We are gonna be down eventually.
Yeah.
We have more equipment than we have. When I say my equipment, it doesn't cost you every day.
Put a plow in front of the chief's vehicle, you do a lot of.
Yeah.
Making it around.
Okay, streets and alleys?
Sure.
Yeah.
Should I go on?
Yeah.
Leaf collection and brush collection is, I believe, done for the year. The holiday direction, uh, decorations are up. The village is prepared for snow removal and ice control, uh, because of being shorthanded, there will be overlapping routes. Uh, typically, there's six snow plows working three hour, three routes, but this year, the center of town will only have one plow with help coming from the other two routes. Uh, we have done this in the past, increased their snow removal time in the standard four-inch snowfall from four hours to five hours. And they're just gonna start one hour earlier if in fact it's falling, it's falling in the early morning hours before rush hour. And that's my report.
Okay, good one. Sewer and water?
Water and sewer department monthly reports are in full for review.
One question. The water department is not.
We do not have the water bill.
Next month, are you gonna separate the numbers or are they gonna be lumped?
No, 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 you'll get two separate reports next month, and then we'll have to compare those to the water billing register, which will also come up next month, and I think that was what you were referring to.
Right, yeah, there's no water billing register.
Builders, yeah, you're talking about, yeah.
I didn't want us to get into the lumped together.
Consider a bid award for Maxwell Street water main replacement, uh, to brand builders in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, we had nine, ninety-nine thousand, eight thirty-five budgeted, um, engineer's estimate on the project was one forty-two, hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, eleven big packages were picked up and eleven came back. My recommendation is to award it to brand builders, so I'll make a motion for, uh, for the amount of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars to brand builders for Maxwell Street water main replacement.
Second. Okay, the motion is made, second, any, any discussion?
I've got a few questions.
Yeah.
In the last board meeting, we had a modification from, uh, Baxter and Woodman concerning the cost. Did anybody compare the cost of brand builders to the estimate from the engineer for the quantity that's gotta be done? Or are we just looking at numbers? Cause this number is less than the budget that was provided by the village earlier, and then the engineer came through and said, hang on, guys, it's another hundred forty, it's a total hundred forty-two thousand, not a hundred ninety, not ninety-eight. You get a bid at ninety-eight, that's under our budget, but did anybody verify that what they're bidding incorporates everything in the engineer's estimate?
That's up to the engineer to, to determine.
I'm only asking the question.
No, and, and that's what they're, that's what they do, and that's their recommendation. Uh, yeah, I, if you take all the, all the bids that were proposed, I think that figure of a hundred forty-one thousand or a hundred forty-two would have been just about the midpoint of all eleven bids.
Right, I just wanna make sure that if the engineer came back and noticed that there was additional work that they didn't include in the original numbers, that they've also verified that the bidders are all on the same page. And that one guy didn't forget some portion, that all of a sudden he's gonna come back and say, oh, I didn't include that.
They weren't all on the same page, I don't think.
That's the idea of the, the, uh, the contractor being qualified by the engineer which was done.
That doesn't say that he's got everything incorporated.
He, the, that's what the engineers do, correct?
It all depends. What happened on well five, all they did, the bid tab was, this vendor, this vendor, this vendor, here's the numbers, what do you guys wanna do? Chief man's this guy over here, no one ever looked at the details. My question is, did people look at the details because we're gonna approve this, and if Brent builders forgot something and someone didn't look into it, to make sure that everything's not included, we're gonna come back to this again and be up near that one forty-two you got from you? So, did the engineer do that to that level of detail? I can't say that they have, cause I didn't see it happen in the past.
They, they build a spreadsheet for all the bidders, and they put the quantity, they put the price, unit pricing all the way down, make sure that they hit all of the unit prices they have to provide. Brian, I don't disagree with you that well project, maybe there were some things missed. Fortunately, this, this project's a really simple, I mean, it's stone, it's pipe, it's service line. Um, you know, we were even commenting, you know, we can almost do this thing in-house for less than what this bid is if we had to. I mean, we did Indiana Avenue for thirty-five grand, so, uh, I'm not as worried about that one. But what concerned us with Brent is, did they have extensive municipal experience? Uh, Brent put the water main on Church Road from the baby lumber to Dutch American Way, that was their job when baby lumber was built. They did it for baby though, they didn't do it for us, but Baxter had no problems with that install. And that was a, a complicated one because they had to sleeve and go underneath the railroad and they had to get UP's permission to do that. So, they have done more complicated work for future than this job. That being said, there's no guarantee that this thing would not go over budget on any project, although I doubt it on this one.
So, I guess the wonder I have is then why did, why did the engineer's estimate go up to a hundred forty-two thousand dollars?
Based on bids they were opening further north. They did not anticipate getting eleven bids on this job.
And this also goes into time of year too, I think, in my opinion.
Depends on the contractor.
Being in the, in the industry right now, you hit a slow time going into the dead of winter where most municipalities are not looking to do this, they do it in the middle of summer. Well, guess what, you're willing to take a little bit less profit to keep your guys going and keep your guys working another month. Which was kinda part of the plan when I discussed, when we discussed doing this, one of the reasons why we had kinda looked at doing it this time of year. It's kinda why we got the pricing we did and it was done on Indiana Avenue also.
But then why?
That has a lot to play.
Why did the engineer's estimate literally go up almost fifty thousand dollars? I'm just trying to make sure that we're not walking into this thing blind and be aware that someone's looked at the details.
The engineers' estimates are always high.
Well, at one point, they were on target, under ninety-nine, or ninety-nine thousand dollars, they're at ninety-eight from the bidder. And now we're at one forty-two, I'm just concerned, and we're saying, well, we expect it to be less than the forty-two from the, or one forty-two from the, from the engineer. I just wanna make sure that the entire scope is not missed and we don't have one of these loops.
Brian, I don't think that was their original estimate, that was my question. And I was pretty close, I just. I think their estimate, their first estimate was about one twelve-five, and I know they always estimate high. Now, they still went from one twelve to one forty-two, and I was at a conniption. I mean, how the prices changed that much in nine months? But the bid process proved that we are in a very competitive market for this type of job. Now, there were Storps fittings in there that we took out, so that price is not a new Storps fitting.
What do you think about that?
We don't, it, it's not standard for our height. And the, the fire district has a Storps adapter that they use on their. We start putting, there are Storps fittings in the industrial, that's the only place they can be. But I'm, I'm comfortable, and this is right on target for the budget, and I'm very happy it's not one forty-two.
I just wanna make sure that the engineers reviewed the bids to be that they're complete, and we don't get one of these, we didn't realize it, you have everything in there.
Yeah, the, the only time that happened in fall, you're gonna have to help me, is when we had, did a nightmare excavating.
Don't even talk, I was thinking of that in my mind.
But they hit the water, did they not with a boring machine? They, they actually hit a main, uh, with a boring machine, put it in sanitary force main, and we did have a forty thousand dollar cost overrun on that job, and they're by that bridge. That was a very complicated job, this one is not.
And we, and we bore some of that extra cost also besides that, if I remember.
Yeah.
Whatever, yeah, that, it did happen, I know what you're saying, don't get me wrong.
I'm just questioning.
I understand what you're saying.
Just two points, number one, what happened is it, is what we talked about exactly what happened, is we, we thought it was gonna be X amount of dollars, but it came in much lower, and it did, that did occur on other jobs that we were going to do. Second point is, is on the letter that Baxter and Woodman gave, maybe in the future, we need to ask for a sentence, something like that it meets the.
All quantities are satisfied.
Something along that line in the future, cause the letter really, it sorta says it, but it doesn't say it. It just says he's qualified to do the job, it doesn't say he's qualified to do the job with the specifications that the engineer, who was Baxter and Woodman, gave him. So that if in fact it comes back and say, you know what, we missed fifty feet, well, then it's your fault because you're the one who specified the amount of footage, so maybe they, in the future, that's the worst. But bottom line is what happened is it, is what we thought would happen, it was high, it came in low because of the time of the year, and I remember discussing that distinctly.
Do we, no, also in here, it says the mathematical errors contained in one of the bid proposals did not affect the selection of a little bidder. I think that kinda also tells us that they went through this item by item.
But.
Well, that just, that just means that someone, when they submitted their cost, couldn't add up, and that's the last one, which is Aries Inc. It's the only one that they corrected the day.
Being that we're, we've been correcting problems in the past, I know it, curse he's coming from.
Yeah, and, and, and I understand, it's a, it's maybe one person's concerns about a specific engineer, so I, I kinda figured there was gonna be questions on it, but, but there's a motion out there, so.
You, you made that a motion?
Yeah, I didn't make that a motion.
Any other discussion? If none, roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Domanski?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
Sewer plant, uh, repair update, the gearbox in clarifier one has been replaced, uh, the sludge valves in the outer ring of the orbital ditch are scheduled to be replaced after the holidays at a cost of forty-two hundred, uh, eighty-three. Uh, approximately four hundred and seventy-four thousand gallons of liquid sludge, um, which have accumulated over two years, has been hauled out. Um, and, uh, the diesel pumps have been monerized. Uh, last is, consider a proposal from Baxter and Woodman engineers to renew the five-year operating permit for the sewer treatment plant at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the current five-year permit expires in October, two thousand thirteen. Uh, the engineers believe the village will have to monitor nitrogen and phosphorus in the next five-year period, and left it address disinfection by providing an ultraviolet lighting chamber prior to the fluent being discharged into the creek. The cost of this item could be around four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, um, which again is an engineer estimate. Um, but the engineers believe they could get the I E P A to agree to a timetable for installation of the UV lighting, delaying the installation until two thousand sixteen, should give us a, a three-year, uh, window. Um, the village needs to submit a renewal package to the I E P A in April of two thousand thirteen, and then the final permit package in October of two thousand thirteen. So, I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept a proposal from Baxter and Woodman engineers to renew the five-year operating permit for the sewer treatment plant at a cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, questions?
Just one comment, this they do right. This is one thing. Okay?
One thing?
No, I was saying, they, they do this right.
Oh, roll call.
Okay. Whaley?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Domanski?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clear.
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Okay, public building properties?
Fire department building update, I have not heard of one.
Uh, we talked to the fire chief, Paul, it was a week ago, about the building, and he said the fire district board has not made a decision, is that correct, Paul?
They're looking at various places too, I think they're looking at the lot, they were gonna have, have contact with the church next door, possibly putting it up there, they were talking about it, I don't know if that's gonna happen. Maybe it was all talk, I don't know, but they, no, they haven't made a decision on it.
And the ice rink, uh, was put up so we'd have a mild winter, right, Jonathan?
That's right. Never have a winter. Never have another winter again in Beecher, nothing, nothing below forty degrees, just keep putting ice rink up every year, and we'll have some nice mild winters, save a lot.
Thank you for that.
Not a lot to worry about being a man short for plowing, we shouldn't have to do much of that this year with an ice rink up, so, should be good to go.
All right, so, as, as soon as we get cold weather, without wind, so it makes it smooth, you know, it'll be a nice, uh, nice rink, so, it's up. And that ends my report.
I, one, one quick question, uh, Tractors for Cure, have you had any meetings at all, or?
We have.
What's, what's happened?
We have a meeting for January after the holidays.
Okay, because, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a committee, I understand?
Yeah, we do have a committee, we met, uh, came up with a bunch of good ideas on what we're looking for. Um, and what we did is we, we had a discussion, we're gonna come back again in January and put all those thoughts together. Because that's, that's kind of our, our process.
Okay.
This, this is different than the memorial, because we're, we're really starting from scratch with this one, you know, so, but there's a lot of great ideas, we have a very enthusiastic chairman, you know, and he'll keep us going. So, uh, and that, that's a good thing.
There's no doubt in my mind that he keep it going.
But it, it's going very well, have a, a great committee.
What was the amount that he pledged to, to start this thing with?
I don't know if there was a set amount.
Oh, okay, I was, I was curious.
Not, not a set amount at this point.
Okay.
See, the, the thing about, um, Tractors for Cure, it can't come into play with the monument itself. Because that, Tractors for Cure is donations toward the cancer society, it's not donations to the.
Has he got pledges on donations, or is this just, I, I, I'm trying to.
No, he has, he has, uh, talked, and I don't know if there's any.
Oh, okay, there's no account set up for it or anything of that nature?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Everything's still in the very infant stage.
Okay, I'm just curious.
That's my report.
Okay. I got a quick, few things here, South Suburban Airport legislation, twenty-six fifty-one, uh, twenty-six fifty-two evidently is not going anywhere, uh, due to the fact that our congressman resigned, and there's a turmoil up north, and I don't think our senator is going to move anything with that bill until after the election, so. I don't foresee anything really happening major. Uh, we did have a meeting with our state senator last Saturday, and, uh, I don't know, we really didn't do anything resolved, uh, which we normally don't, as, as a bunch of mayors, but we had different opinions. But, uh, we will let you know what's happening with it.
Should have a workshop.
Little workshop, yeah. Eliana Expressway update, and I don't know if anybody's driven south, but they are out there, uh, surveying like crazy, there's stakes and everything else, so, I've seen crews out there numerous times, so. Uh, they are gonna try to come up with a corridor, and that'll be next year before they, not a corridor, but a roadway, so. So, we'll see, we'll let you know what happens when something comes up. Change, uh, our intergovernmental meeting, Bob, what was the reason you had, from the twenty-ninth to the thirtieth, a basketball game?
Basketball.
Basketball game, so.
I already talked to the school district about changing it, and they said that's no problem.
Okay.
Uh, they wanted to do a presentation on curriculum, uh, that week, and, uh, I asked the board, what other issues would you like on the agenda, because right now, that's really the only one. I don't think there's anything new with the Eliana, I really don't wanna talk about the airport.
We won't know about the Eliana probably anyhow, so we won't have an update.
So, is there any other issues you want brought up?
LED sign.
No, is there something else you wanna?
Yeah, anybody have any issues at all, or anything?
I mean, we'll have a roundtable where each taxing body present their issues, and we can discuss them, but is there any issues of?
I think Scott should have a few things that maybe the fire department can enlighten everybody on their building.
On the building?
Project, yeah, I think you also have the Tractors for Cure project that maybe some of them don't even, aren't aware of, I don't know.
By that meeting, we should have, uh, something.
Some input on that, so, anybody else have anything? We really don't have an agenda other than the school board with their, their curriculum.
Then I'll get together with superintendent and get it.
We should ask the fire, well, that could be on there, the fire board's.
I, I, yeah, I, I'd have to, I wanna ask their permission to put that out, I don't wanna put something on the agenda, it's gonna get torqued up.
Well, I, I think it'd be good to discuss, to, to get their feelings, and their thoughts, you know?
Yeah, 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 just get their thoughts, don't give them any, let them give you any input, just thoughts. Item number four, consider motion.
Oh, you got a motion on your lead.
That's what I was doing.
Intergovernmental.
Oh, the intergovernmental, oh, yeah, chief, that's, yeah.
I make a motion changing the date of the intergovernmental meeting from Tuesday, January twenty-ninth to Wednesday, January thirtieth. I'll second.
Okay, motion made, second, discussion, roll call.
Clear.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yeah.
Domanski?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaley?
Yes.
So, also consider a motion cancel. So, also consider a motion canceling the second regular meeting in the month of January and February. Any problems with that?
Uh, can we do a workshop, one of those?
You can, if you want, yes, that's, that's fine, if you want to do that, that'd be good.
We should do a workshop before one of our village meetings.
What's that?
On the, you're talking about the sign.
He's saying in place.
In place.
She's saying in place.
In lieu of the regular village board meeting, she wants to have the workshop on the states. In January?
Either one, whatever, good for everybody.
Yeah, just do it as early as possible.
So, it's an open meeting, it'll be posted and everything else?
January. January?
We've already got the room.
We will not cancel the, the, uh, meet, second meeting in January, just in February then.
Well, no, it won't, it won't, it won't be a regular meeting.
Well, it's got to be an open, it's got to be an open meeting because you got to.
Right, we, we would need to cancel the meeting and then make a motion that there's going to be a workshop that day. And you could move it to the village hall if you want to.
Yeah, let's do that.
It's open to the public.
That's way too uncomfortable. We, we, we just had our meeting, we tried to get six people in there, seven people.
Apparently empty.
That village hall's extremely uncomfortable. What difference does it make, we have it, we can have it here.
Yeah.
You've already got them.
Scheduled anyhow, so.
It's fine.
Okay.
But it's just a workshop.
Yes, just a workshop.
Canceling the second regular board meetings of January and February and having a workshop for L.E.D. signs on the second meeting in January.
It should be January twenty-second. I'll second that. Great, January twenty-second. Twenty-second.
Discussion?
Twenty-first.
Roll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Popros?
Yes.
Zemansky?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clear?
Yes.
It's the twenty-first, twenty-first, yeah.
Our refuse contract, we have had, we haven't been negotiating, basically, we had proposals from, from, uh, two waste haulers, and that would be Homewood disposal and, and Allied. We discussed many options, uh, one of the big issues is yard waste, uh, what Homewood has proposed and what Allied has proposed. And we are investigating more, and hopefully we can save the customers and residents some money on, on our new proposal, what the yard please pick up. We will update you in the future. Eastcom, uh, meeting is scheduled for January third. And basically, what we're doing is discussing health insurance rates, uh, and a new fee structure. Uh, we broke down, the fire departments probably will be paying more, and the villages will be paying less than what we were in the past, so. The, the new formula looks like we'll save about five, six thousand dollars a year, so it's looking good. Bob, you want to discuss number seven?
One, one thing before we get there, Paul, just clarification. The second board meeting would have been the twenty-eighth of January.
Okay.
So, about seven.
And I, maybe the planning commission members want to, that's why it'd be better to have it here anyhow.
It's open to the public, so.
Yeah, it's open to the public, but I think the planning commission members might want to be here and hear what's going on, so. I think it'd be.
Um, we're going to be participating in a graduate research project. Um, they're going to take our municipal, per municipal services we provide, extrapolate over twenty years, and determine staffing, equipment, and monetary requirements that we would have twenty years down the road. Um, I saw what they did for Manhattan, yeah, it's a useful document, it's debatable, but it's a project for them. I guess it's some, there's some benefit to it, so they have something to that. Again, it's a plan, it's not going to be something you have.
Any questions? And also like to request closed session to discuss non-union employee compensation for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Bob, you have anything else?
Jeanette and I and Jeff will be leaving the room, but we'll help you tear down after you get done with your closed session and come back.
Hopefully it won't take too long, so.
You got to do the C.D. anyway, right? Okay. So, you'll have to appoint a secretary for that. Also, there was a fire in town.
Okay, wait a minute. Executive session.
There was a fire in town this morning, and they hooked up to the hydrants on Eagle Lake Road in Montegoat, and they stirred up the water system. So, if you had rusty water, it was because they were pulling fifteen hundred minute out, it was fire that had already been.
You could tell by the pressure, the pressure right now.
Yeah, well, five is, is still on manual status, we don't have that. Hooked up, so we were pulling water out of the main part of town.
You could tell it.
You could tell, you're getting me.
Not even well three could keep up.
Well, it could keep up, but when you have that surge, when they hook the pump up, and they start sucking fifteen hundred a minute out.
Oh, you're not.
It takes a while for the pumps to react and to catch up. And in that process, you stir everything up in the tanks. And there was a pressure reduction, it was probably at six in the morning.
Yeah.
Six is when it, when it really started, between six and six twenty-five, during the night.
Okay.
Farm fire and a couple horses were killed.
Really? Okay, a motion in order to adjourn our regular session into executive session to discuss non-union compensation.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Clear?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.